All right, first order of business is public hearing. We have a poll hearing. Can I read that?
Yeah, can you read it from there?
Do I have enough of it here?
The whole public hearing notice.
Is that all we?
Yeah.
In accordance with provisions of section 22, chapter 166 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held at the Hardwick Municipal Office Building, 307 Main Street, Gilbertville, Mass. On the 12th of February 2024. At 6:30 PM on petition of the National Grid Verizon, New England request permission to locate polls, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across a public way, North Road and Taylor Hill Road. So the hearing is open, could you say?
Sure. So the project basically entails two polls, poll number 33 and 34. There's currently existing polls 33 and 34 that we are actually trying to remove out of existing wetlands. And they're quite old polls. I think from my records I dug up, they were about late 50s, early 60s that they've been there. So quite a long time, so they need to be upgraded. Along with that, we wanted to remove them out of the wetlands into the public way along the roadway so that we could easily maintain and access them for the future. So that is really the extent of the project. Both polls 95 and 2, which are on both sides of these two polls in question, are also getting replaced, but they are not moving per se. They're just getting upgraded in place. And that's the extent of the project.
All right. Anybody here to speak to this? Sir?
Just want to know, how long do you think the power will be out?
So with a switch over when it comes to the poll replacements, typically unless there's any sort of significant outage, there shouldn't be any real significant outage longer than maybe half an hour. But that's all approximate.
Yep.
They should have a notification system where they will notify those who are in question to be out for any amount of time. But it shouldn't be very long.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know that you'd call.
Yeah, they typically put together what they just call an outage list. And if they need to disconnect power, which I do assume in this one that they will need to disconnect and run new overhead wire because of the span distances from these two polls out. I think they're measured to be about 50 feet away from roadway. So they have to get something we call a track machine in there, remove the two poles, and then swing new cable over. But they do that so quick, they do it in tandem. They have two crews out on the road, and then they have the track machine in there. So it's, they essentially run the new cable over, and it's essentially dead until they're ready to disconnect or reconnect. It's very, very quick and very efficient.
Could you just state your name and address, please?
I'm Henry Alston, 1050 North Row.
Henry Alston.
H A U P T M A N F. H A U P T 10A N N.
Two N's.
You said 50 North, is that correct, sir?
1050.
10.
I'm the one that granted you the answer.
Oh, perfect. You must have spoke with maybe a Jill Wilson. So I'm here on her behalf.
And with your attorney, too, so.
Okay, understood, yes. Makes all make sense.
Yeah, and they already came out and just betrayed you.
Oh, perfect, good.
I was surprised.
Yeah, I am, I'm too. I'm surprised I haven't. Good.
Okay, I'll close this hearing.
6:35.
And call for a vote? Motion.
I would make a motion to grant the replacement and addition of polls as noted in the public hearing.
I'll second it. In favor?
Aye.
We're all set.
All right, thank you so much, selectmen. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Sure.
And stay safe tomorrow for however much in all weekend.
Who knows?
Who knows?
It's probably just the wind, see?
Yeah, and it's solid ever is in England. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy guy, that national figure.
Oh, good for you.
Yeah, those finally season the stuff.
All right, we got a lot of uniforms in the room. So we won't make you wait.
We're here for you.
Thank you. I'm here for Officer Patrick Alstrom. Whereas every day, residents of Hardwick directly benefit from the dedication and commitment of the Town of Hardwick employees, those public servants and unsung heroes that keep Hardwick running. And whereas, on Sunday, January 21st, 2024, Officer Patrick Alstrom responded to a medical call within Hardwick and performed CPR as well as applied the AED, which led to the individual regaining a pulse. Whereas, thanks to lifesaving efforts of Officer Alstrom, taking immediate action and recognizing the severity of the medical emergency, resulting directly in saving the life of the individual. A failure to act or action after delay could have led to a tragic outcome. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of Hardwick, Massachusetts, do hereby recognize and hold in high regard Officer Patrick Alstrom. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a big deal. Statistics on that stuff's terrible. You did real good.
It's climbing, but it's still.
It's what?
It's climbing, but it's still.
It's getting better?
It's getting better, you know?
Mr. Chairman, can I read ours, too, please?
Of course.
So this is on behalf of the chief. On Sunday, January 21st, 2004, at approximately 11:32 AM, Officer Patrick Alstrom was dispatched to a residence on Petra Hall Road for a male party that was unconscious, not breathing, and cardiac arrest. Officer Alstrom cleared the call that he was currently on and responded to this priority call. On arrival, the patient's wife, who had started effective CPR, Officer Alstrom quickly assessed the assist, assembled and attached the AED to the patient. After several successful shocks, numerous rounds of effective CPR rescue breathing, the patient began to show signs of responsiveness and life. Officer Alstrom's quick response, recognition of the severity of the medical emergency, immediate actions with the AED and effective CPR resulted in the, directly in the saving of the male patient's life. On behalf of the Hardwick New Branch Police Department, we commend Officer Patrick Alstrom for his professionalism and lifesaving actions of that day, and he is being awarded the lifesaving award by our department.
Thank you. We have a presentation also? This is a big deal.
Crystal sign, the LS coordinator here? Any questions?
I'm just gonna get a couple pictures. I think that you, you both have said it very well. Officer Alstrom has been a great supporter of us and tremendous help to us on multiple calls. Especially this one. High-quality CPR and AED is what saves lives. All the medication that we push, the airways that we put in, those are all helpful, but without CPR, none of this would be possible. So the first award that I have is for Officer Alstrom. And you're pinned. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next one that I have is actually for our ambulance crew that evening. Our ambulance crew consisted of EMT Leah and paramedic Dan, our chief. This was a huge team effort. Again, without all of them working together the way that they did, none of this would have been possible. This particular gentleman, he gets to spend another holiday with his families, and that's pretty unheard of. So like our chief said, those numbers are climbing, but they don't happen every day. We don't always get to find out that that particular individual got to go home. So Leah, here's your pin. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for taking care of us.
We take advantage of these moments because we don't think there are many of them, right? But it's clearly an example of what, you know, we do in the field, and this is a good example of that, of just early recognition and early interventions that save lives. You know, equipping these guys with AEDs and the knowledge to go there. I mean, I don't know if that's an EMT, but the first responders or the other offices, they are far well trained and they know what to do and they have the equipment. That's important. That's good, save lives, the community.
And to add what to Dan's, it's funny, it's not funny, but I've been to other first responder trainings for police departments, and it's kind of a joke. It's a four-hour, having lunch and kind of do nothing. Our guys do first responder training. They do the hands-on, they participate in it, they want to know the knowledge, they ask the questions, and they want the equipment to do what they're trained to do, which I find is huge for us, especially out here waiting for crews.
Because you're likely the first one on scene.
Absolutely.
Always.
And that's huge.
Yeah.
Yep, that's, that's true. Very, very good.
Not having a hospital is even more vital.
Very good, thank you all.
Yeah, I'm glad the guy is doing, he ended up out of the cabbage. He had a 90% occlusion to a few of his arteries in his heart. So it was just a really good outcome for him. I'm glad he's home. He's home now resting, so.
Do you want to say something?
It's a win, man.
I think everybody's pretty much covered it all. So I'm just glad that I was able to be close by and got there quick.
The problem is, we don't like the recognition. You know what I mean? We do our job because it's our job.
Yeah, but you're all heroes.
We are, but we don't want the recognition.
Yeah, no, yeah.
If there was any way out of this, too.
And I asked him to say something, and he doesn't want to, so. All right. I appreciate the award and the recognition. It's awesome.
Smile everyone.
Smile, you're on camera.
We're on TV. You're on camera. Hopefully they had my good side.
Thank you.
I always turn my back. That's my best side.
And I would like to personally do that.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm glad we're close by.
Yeah, me, too.
It made a difference coming from the station. It might have been a little different of an outcome.
Well, we have other things to do if you'd like to stay.
Thank you for your time.
Jeez, no.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And thank you guys for being good partners.
Thanks for coming to the fire.
Yeah, thank you guys very much.
Thanks for coming to the fire.
This is refreshing to see, too, so thank you.
You guys have a good night.
You, too.
You, too. Good night.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we can make him cry.
No, I was.
I get teary when I see a fire, don't you?
It just kind of brought it all back, thank you.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that, but you know him very well.
Very well, yeah, for a long time.
He's a real nice guy. Probably didn't listen to him.
He is.
Okay, back to work. Discussion, should we increase poll fees? Should have kept the kid here.
Well, he doesn't have any idea about it anyway, right?
No, he didn't even know we did it. Should we increase poll fees from $100 to $200?
Just, I looked at the, I saw the cost of the ad. So I'm assuming that's what some of that takes care of.
Absolutely.
Right? And that was like, let's call it 75.
80 bucks.
Yeah, 80 bucks, right? What else goes into it?
Well.
Besides our time?
Our time, administrative time. And Sam, you have to fill out all, you have to fill out all of the butter notices and send them out.
Yeah.
So you do that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm okay with that, then. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, you know, I just thought they should be covering all of the fee, honestly. And then some. I mean, it just, I feel like they should be covering all of the costs, the administrative costs, the costs for, and sometimes it's longer than this ad, you know, sometimes, so.
It's more involved, yep.
Yeah.
Well, should it be a fee plus the cost to run the ad?
It's never be over 200, so.
So you don't think, okay.
I don't think.
Even with the time to, okay. As long as you feel it's covered.
Yeah.
And then the number of butters goes up and down.
Yep.
But that's a lot of printing and a lot of stamping.
I mean, they do send the cards, but we still have to fill everything out because we set the poll, set the hearing. You know, we set the dates.
I'm fine with that. You want a motion?
Sure.
I would make a motion that we increase the poll fee. No, is that what it is?
Yep.
The poll fee from $100 to $200 effective immediately.
I'll second it. In favor?
Aye.
Stan, would you like to speak to us?
Yes, please. So we have, you know that I'm on Stan and on the subcommittees and that we, you know, are constantly just trying to fight for the small towns and the inbounds that we have in funding. And, you know, the differences that really, Boston and that area just doesn't see our struggles, you know? And I don't want to go over all again. I know, you know, this is new, but, you know, we've been talking about it for a long time. I showed you our priorities the last time when I was on the first subcommittee, the legislative committee. And, you know, we all brought ours all together. And then we, you know, tried to combine them as much as we could and streamline it to just be, you know, certain amount. And this is what we came up with.
Yeah, I like this.
I mean, for the most part, they were all of Hardwick's priorities. And then there are some more thrown in here, you know, the prevailing wage and procurement threshold. So the STEM members are, we all were, you know, were on the listserv, and they'd like to have this, you know, voted on and adopted from the select boards because we think that will hold more weight up on Beacon Hill if, you know, the town's really behind it.
Just these priorities.
If we adopt these priorities. This is, I put Hardwick's, but this is, everybody has the same, and then they put their own seal on it. So we have a lot of towns so far that have done it, and some are doing it tonight and tomorrow night. So we're trying to get it adopted so we can really, you know, be more firm. And it's not just STEM or not just the town administrators that are constantly seeking the funding, but it's the towns and the select boards that have also felt that it's important. Yeah, the leaders of the town, exactly.
I think, I think this hits on a lot of things that are lacking.
Yeah.
So it's good, it's good. I'm good, I'm good to support this.
I am, too.
I would make a motion to support the 2024 legislative priorities put forth by STEM.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Do we, like, a letter or something? Are you gonna?
I would just say that, you know, that at your regular scheduled meeting, you voted to adopt.
Perfect, perfect. The priorities, yeah, okay.
Just don't say that there were only two of us.
There was a quorum.
Yep.
Okay. Sign that priorities warrant.
Here it is on Ryan's happy paper.
Discussion, appointment of Deputy Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief Nicholas Gomond. I know him. He's remarkably trained.
I don't know if I can do this.
No, I don't either. He's.
Is it interim though? Like, how does that work when it's an interim chief?
Right, that's what I think you guys needed to discuss.
Is it?
Which was why he wasn't able to just appoint him because he's interim.
Right.
So you might want to have him be interim as long as the chief is.
Until we, you know.
Well, yeah, it could be. For one thing, it makes his title even longer and more awkward. But if, if at the end of the fiscal year, Josh doesn't like it, we don't like Josh, something goes wrong, it would be good to have somebody ready to step in. And that's what a deputy would do. So I don't mind calling him Deputy Fire Chief for now. But if you want to add interim, that's.
Well, I guess I just, because I don't know how it works. If he's appointed deputy, can we change that or can only the chief? Because I know it's a struggle. Like, I just don't know the, how that works.
No, we can change that.
We can change that?
What we're doing here by appointing him is stating that that's the case.
Okay.
You know, Josh didn't know, and I said, no, you guys don't appoint each other. You have to go through the select board.
Yeah, okay. Then I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So do, make a motion to appoint?
Yes, please.
Okay, I would make a motion to appoint Nicholas Gomond to Deputy Chief.
Second. In favor? Aye. Yeah, I assume you're saying aye.
Aye, sorry, yes, aye.
Yeah, he used to be a kid at the youth center.
Yeah, I know, I know who he is. I know, yeah. I've met him before, and I just, I don't know him well.
Yeah. Well, he's taken, he was firefighter one and two, and.
I did see that in the letter, so that was.
He's got a lot of good training. All right, minutes approval, January 22nd of this year and November 29th of two years ago.
I can make a motion on January 22nd, but the other one may have to wait until we have a quorum, you know, because you can't vote on it right now.
Correct.
All right, so I will make a motion to accept the reading minutes from January 22nd, 2024.
I'll second it. In favor?
Aye. And we'll have to table the minutes from November 29th, 2022.
Did anybody get any word from Robert? No? Okay. Reconsideration, whistle stop. Everything in order and we just sign it?
Yeah, so there were some errors and omissions in that first application, so it wasn't able to be approved by the ABC. And so I had CAT come in, and we went through it again with all of the recommendations from the investigator. So it is now complete, and I'll be able to send it in once that's, once the guys have voted on reconsideration. If anybody wants to look at the full application, it's here.
I would make a motion to reconsider an approval of.
The reconsideration, yeah.
Right.
Prove the reconsideration.
For the whistle stop.
Yeah.
At 2:48 Main Street, Gilbertville.
Okay, I'll second it. And we're in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bottom left, yep.
Right down here.
Okay. Colors on the pump station, where are we in agreement?
Yes, and if you look at the meetings, the minutes, it says that we voted on everything. Of course, we didn't have that. I was like, I'm pretty sure we all understood that it was, it was the color, and then black for everything else. Black, black.
Yeah, and a kind of a brick red.
Yeah, that autumn brown was what it was called. So yes, we can confirm on with that because I was already done.
Okay.
Okay, Matrix.
I spoke with the newest guy today, so the other one is gone, or I don't know where he went. He's just not our contact. And he talked about, you know, the implementation of it and bringing the fiber in, and really actually doing a survey first to see who would be interested in having this high speed because much higher than what we get through Comcast. But he was supposed to send me some links and things like that today, and he didn't. So I don't really, and I'm, his lingo and mine just aren't not the same. So when he talks about 100 over 100 or 25 over 3, and I said, I need some, I need some paperwork, I need something to digest. So he, he was supposed to send me links and things like that. Maybe he didn't get to it today, so hopefully tomorrow, and we'll have more information next time.
Do you understand that stuff?
A little bit, but, you know. It's just the speed and the, you know.
Stand with him. All right, and I told Nicole I'd get involved with that if she wants, because she was saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, committee reports. I would, I'll report on the capital planning committee. Mark Korzek and I went to see USDA and met with them and talked about the project. Even though Mark and I agreed that we weren't going to be looking in their air view, we've got to deal with what's in front of us. They actually got in, Steve, who's a local. He's married to Joe Boise's daughter.
Travis.
Yeah.
Yep.
He put a lot of, you know, history on it. I learned a lot of things about the timing because I was kind of absent for a while. But bottom line is, we're, they're hopeful and sympathetic. There weren't any surprise gifts. Our time of, the time of the whole project, it can be extended. We were coming to an expiration date or something, and that's in the wind, that's not necessary to worry about. And there could be money further in the future that we could borrow. But that's it. We had a lot of fun trying to find the place. They were nice guys. And that's about it.
Good.
I thought I, wanted to come back with a rabbit out of the hat, but no. What else?
I think overall, though, it's been good working with them.
Yeah.
100%.
With the USDA guys, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and the engineers, for that matter, like, it's been good.
Good. Well, we're, we're approaching time to borrow more, so I'm, I'm seeing this, I'm not against, I'm against the plan from the very beginning, but obviously we're dealing with it, and we'll just deal with it.
Unnecessary, yeah, unnecessary, yeah, to be done.
I wanted to greenhouse sewer treatment facility, but can't have everything. Also, I've been working, one thing that I brought up at the capital planning meeting was the fact that I'd, I sit, I'm proud to sit in front of the townhouse on the, at the fair Friday night, and of course, I see a thousand people, so that, I love that. And probably one out of ten of them stumbled getting up onto the portico, because there's about an inch and a half drop in those flags. So that and the fact that the front door threshold is ten inches from the portico floor. Too big. So Randy Noble and I have talked about it and traded stories, and now I know, I think, why the slabs are settling, and they're only a couple inches thick. It's not going to be a big deal to lift them and regrade and put them back so that there's no trip. As far as a stone, and we are agreed, he and I, that it should be a stone to step up to and then into the building. It really has to be deeper, the tread has to be deeper than normal, because it's just two and it's an odd height. So there'd be a five-inch riser to a stone top, and then five inches to get into the building. Stone will cost thirty-four hundred dollars. It'll weigh seventeen hundred pounds. So he's got a price, he's got it designed with a supply. Obviously, nothing's happened, but that could come up in the future, that's what we're talking. So that's an informal committee report. And that's all we got.
Can I just, I just want to remind everybody who's watching that we're having the hazard mitigation hearing at five thirty, at five thirty on February twenty sixth, and then the CDBG public hearing at six thirty here, if anybody's interested in coming out to support or otherwise.
And then our Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, then the Board of Selectmen, th- these are just the public hearings.
Yeah.
So will we be here, do we need to come at five thirty at night?
They'd like you to.
Yeah, this is the hazard mitigation public hearing, we, I was planning on putting it as the first item on the agenda.
We did part, we did the first of them, right? That we talked and they...
They've done one public presentation.
Yeah.
Now they'll do the second one.
Okay.
We've wrapped up, we've gone over the, the plan from five years ago, and changed things, filled things in, lost, completely lost a couple of things. I realized, finally asked her, can, can we just lose this? And she said, oh, yeah. I said, okay, because some of the stuff from the hazard mitigation plan five years ago said, everything should be nice, and things like that, you know, and this, that, and it was just, and you couldn't disagree with any of it, but I didn't see where there was anything to do. So I started putting agreed, and she said FEMA doesn't like that, so. So she's worked that up, I'm talking about Jamie Kaplan, and we've gone quite tight with her, Sandy and I sit in Sandy's office and we Zoom, so they'll be presenting to the public, and there'll still be time to tweak it, but it'll pretty much be wrapping up. There's one more committee meeting after that, and then it goes to the state. And if the state says okay, it goes to FEMA, and once FEMA passes it, now we can, in fact, maybe use it to help pay for the sewer, just maybe. MVP, all that stuff.
All right.
Might pay off, so we'll see. That's all I have. That's all you have?
Yeah.
So I have these printed up. "On behalf of the Town Hardwick Select Board, I would like to thank the Petersham Fire Department for responding to a structural fire in our town on Friday, February ninth. No one was injured and the house was saved. Mutual aid is a great thing. Sincerely, me." That arrive with you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I assume it's going to all the towns that...
Nine of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
I did thirty-nine of these after the big fire at the mill.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Second.